All right. So we'll go ahead and open the Planning Commission meeting for April 7th at 6:30 and we'll rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under universal liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if I made my gavel heard, but there you go. Do we want to do our roll call for Commissioners, Angela, or are we just?
Yep, I will call it.
So I'll turn it over to you for that.
Okay. Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Melcher? Commissioner Walthius? Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Journey?
Present.
And Commissioner Lohman?
Here.
Okay.
All right, just a quick reminder, make sure you're unmuted when you're speaking this for record. At this time, this is the portion of our meeting where it's open to public comment. If you're here to address something that is not on the agenda for this evening, now would be the time to do so. As there's no movement, we'll move on to our meeting minutes from March 17th. Does anybody have any changes, amendments, corrections that they make note of?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Motion and a second. We'll go to, do we want us to go to Blair or Angela this evening for roll call votes?
You don't need to do roll call votes anymore. You can just do the...
All right.
Since everybody's present in the same room, roll call's not necessary.
So you want to just go for that, Angela?
Yep. All in favor of passing the minutes as is?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
All right. At this point, we'll move on to our public hearings. Looks like all conditional use permits for this evening. Application, we'll open the public hearing for application CU 22-04 at 6:33. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a public utility facility in a residential low-density R1 zone. A public utility facility is allowed via conditional use permit per Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.24.030H. A new conditional use application shall be processed if a proposed change results in a change to the lot or parcel boundaries and if there is an increase in the amount of operational activity. Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.060A, 3 and 5, the wastewater treatment plant is an existing facility. The applicant applied for the property line adjustment PLA 20-07, PLA 20-08, PLA 20-09, and PLA 20-10, and is proposing modifications to the existing facility triggering a new conditional use permit, the use application. The subject properties are in a residential low-density R1 zone. So the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So moving on to our Commissioners, does anybody have any personal bias in regard to this application?
None.
No.
Okay. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Any part, ex parte information?
No.
All right. So we'll go ahead and go to Angela for staff report.
Okay, as Commissioner Parker said, this was a conditional use to allow for a public facility in a residential low-density zone. Primarily what this is, is the lot has been used for the wastewater treatment plant for many years. It's one of the areas in our city that is zoned residential and it has a public facility in it. Any new or modifications to the facility there requires another condition, requires a conditional use. They did some property line adjustments recently and they will be putting in some additional applications here soon for some work being done on it. So the main purpose of this is just to approve the conditional use so they can continue doing what they're doing and upgrading it. There isn't any more details other than that. I gave you in your packet, you should have examples of the property line adjustment. All it did is take the multiple properties and turn them into one large property. It made it easier for building so they didn't have to deal with setbacks. They only had their exterior setbacks instead of all the interior ones with all the multiple lots. So the only conditional uses we have is the property owner shall obtain and comply with all applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. And number two, the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of Planning Commission approval if the use has not been substantially established as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.070A within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than one-year requests made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the Planning Commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. Planning Commission action, in acting on a conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in Section 4. Appeal period pursuant to ORS 227.175, the Planning Commission may establish an appeal period of not less than 12 days from the date of the written notice of the Planning Commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is the Planning Commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date of that notice of decision is mailed. Order after the Planning Commission decides, staff recommends that Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion after opening the public hearing, receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. Move to approve application CU 22-04, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application CU 22-04, which includes adopting the findings of fact, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize the decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time specified or for other. So at this time, if you have questions for staff, I think there are public works staff there also if you have questions about this conditional use.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, we'll go ahead and invite our applicant. If they'd wish to come forward and speak, they can. We're nice, I promise. If you could just, oh yeah, can you turn that mic on flash real quick? And then if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Trish Rice, City Engineering Technician, Public Works Maintenance Yard.
So just give us, I mean, you just have to restate basically what's the application's for even though Angela already stated it.
All right. So we have our wastewater treatment plant at this location on Pleasant Valley Road. We are upgrading it to comply with DEQ regulations so that we will no longer overflow the treatment plant into the river. And we are doing the work in two phases, starting construction this fall.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for our applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, if anybody wishes, or anybody else wishes to speak in favor of the application, this would be the time to come forward. Okay? Any opposition testimony, those wishing to speak against? Or any neutral testimony, not wishing to speak for or against, just wishing to be heard? All right. So at that point, we will close the public hearing for CU 22-04 at 6:40 for discussion amongst the commission. I think it's a slam dunk. Yep. Along with the property line adjustments, making it easier for them to construct and not worry about setbacks in such odd-shaped lots. And who's not in favor of keeping the poo out of the burger? So.
Just cut and dry.
I believe so.
Yep.
So if anyone doesn't have any else, any other discussion, we'll look for a motion.
I would move to approve application CU 22...
Commissioner Walthius, will you please turn your microphone on?
There we go.
I would move to approve application CU 22-04, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
All right. So we have a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Go ahead and go to Angela.
All in favor of passing application CU 22-04?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Application is approved.
All right. So at this time, we'll move on to our next application, which is CU 22-05. We'll open the public hearing.
Jamie's on now. Do we need to do a roll call since she's online?
Angela, yep, thank you. Angela, would you like to include Commissioner Melcher in our role as here?
Yes, I do.
She's on this online.
Yep.
And just to keep in mind, Jamie, you are currently muted. So on, I think it's on your end, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we will go ahead and open application CU 22-04.
Minor, minor point shared. Since we have one member joining remotely now, we will need to do a roll call vote for the votes. The main purpose of the roll call is to keep track of everything with people joining remotely, sometimes harder.
All right. You good with that, Angela?
Yes.
We'll vote on the next ones. All right. So we will open the public hearing for CU 22-05 at 6:43. Application CU 22-05, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a home occupation, home business on their property. The home occupation would consist of teeth whitening and cosmetic services operated by the resident of the property within the dwelling located on the property. The applicant expects to see one client at a time, operate no later than 9:00 PM. The applicant will contain all parking on the subject property and the applicant will be the only employee. So the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So with that being said, do any of our Commissioners have any personal bias in regard to this application?
No.
None.
No.
No.
I will state for the record that it is my wife and I will be abstaining from all voting. So anybody have any conflicts of interest in regard to this application?
No.
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 Okay. Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
I've known the applicant for quite a while. So, all right. With that being said, Angela, would you like to take away on the staff report?
As Commissioner Parker stated, this applicant is requesting a conditional use to establish a home occupation on their property. Sorry. Based on the application, there are no wetlands on the application. There's access along First Avenue. There's city water and sewer services. It's an established home. The subject property is in the R1 zone. The applicant expects to see one client at a time and operate no later than 9:00 PM. The applicant will contain all parking on the subject property. The applicant will be the only employee. The subject property contains about 21,452 square feet and it is a residential low-density zone. For the application to comply with all applicable cities, city codes, and state and federal laws, this application may require additional permits. If this application is approved, staff recommends a condition of approval that prior to operation, the applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses to the Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of CU 22-05. The applicant states that there is dedicated interior space for the business. The applicant states that the property has approximately three off-street parking spaces. They plan to have one client at a time and they will not operate past 9:00 PM. Staff finds that the site size, dimensions, location, topography, and access are adequate for the proposed use and based on the findings, the applicant complies with the criteria. Staff has not identified any negative impacts to the adjacent properties to ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code. Staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in Section 4 of this report. With attachment C, there are comments from the abutting neighbors and the comments that were received is that they had no problem with the business being put at this location. We did not see, receive any negative comments for it. The subject property does have access to city water and sewer. Staff finds that the proposed use has adequate capacity. As proposed, staff finds that the home occupation is secondary to the residential use. The applicant has stated that they have a dedicated interior space within the home. The applicant will contain the business in the dedicated space within the home. And staff finds that the home occupation shall be contained and conducted within the enclosed building. The applicant has not proposed to use any materials or mechanical equipment that are detrimental to residential use of the dwelling or nearby dwellings. The applicant will contain parking for three businesses, worth of business within the subject property boundaries. The applicant states they have three off-street parking spaces. The applicant is not proposing marijuana facility. Sweet Home, the provisions of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allow the Planning Commission to oppose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. As specified in Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.050, conditions could include but are not limited to expanding setbacks, limiting hours of operation, requiring site or architectural design features, imposing additional science standards, and so forth. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of this report. These conditions are primary, are primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to the application. As required under this section, staff recommends that a condition of approval require that the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the Planning Commission approval if the use has not been substantially established as defined under the Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.070A within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than one-year requests made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the Planning Commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below are required in order to ensure that the applicant, application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria in Section 3 and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Board use of appeals, LUBA, may only, may only be based on review and design criteria contained in Section 3. The recommended conditions of approval for application CU 22-05, one, the applicant shall contain the business within a dedicated space within the home. Two, the applicant shall contain parking for the business within the subject property boundaries. Three, the property owner shall obtain and comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. Four, the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the Planning Commission approval if the use has not been substantially established as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.070A within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than one-year requests made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the Planning Commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. In acting on a conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff recommended conditions are included in Section 4. Pursuant to ORS 227.175, the Planning Commission may establish an appeal period of not less than 12 days from the date of the written notice of the Planning Commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day, 12-day appeal period from the date of the notice of the decision is mailed. Order after the Planning Commission decides, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. One, move to approve application CU 22-05, which includes the adopting of the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of the approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Move to deny application CU 22-05, which includes adopting the findings of fact, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorials that memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. Have any questions for staff?
All right. So at this time, we will invite our applicant to come forward. And after you have a seat, if you would state your name and address.
There you go.
Jody Parker, 1301st Avenue, Sweet Home.
And the purpose of your application?
Is to do dental whitening and some cosmetic services outside of my home. I would like to add, I work full-time as a registered nurse. This is just a part-time thing that I'm doing. I'm expanding and just kind of doing some things for myself. I plan on maybe seeing two people a week is all, which is why I can't afford rent somewhere else at a beauty salon and would just prefer to do it outside the home.
Do you have to have any special license to do that?
Yes, I've been trained and I have insurance and liability insurance already for the dental whitening. The cosmetic, I haven't started that training yet, so just kind of gonna start with the dental whitening and see how it goes.
Anybody else have any questions for our applicant? All right. Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So at this time, if any, we have any proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application? And we have none. Any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against? Any neutral testimony, not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard? All right. So we will close the public hearing for CU 22-05 for discussion amongst the council at 7:54.
6:54?
That's what I meant. 6:54. I saw the seven, it was close.
Time to go home.
It's been a long day. Just still gotta lay some dough. So.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Again, I will abstain from voting. We have no other discussion. We'll look for a motion. Oh, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we did that.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve application CU 22-05, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Melcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lohman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Abstain.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. You may go home, get ready for work. All right. She works nights. All right. At this point, we will move on to application CU 22-06, and we will open the public hearing at 6:55. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a single-family residence in a commercial highway zone. Single-family residences or manufactured homes meeting standard 17.24.090 are allowed via a conditional use per Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.36.030E. The subject property contains approximately 6,514 square feet and is the commercial highway C2 zone. So the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. That being read in, do any of our Commissioners have any personal bias in regard to this application?
No.
No.
Okay. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
All right. At this time, we'll turn it over to Angela then for our staff report.
Okay, as Commissioner Parker stated, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a single-family residence in the commercial highway zone. Based on the review of the FEMA flood insurance map, the subject property is not in the flood hazard area. The property does not have any local wetland inventories listed on it. The subject property has frontage along 19th Avenue. It has access to city and water sewer services from 19th Avenue. For this, the subject property is in the C2 zone, so in order for the, them to build a single-family residence, they had, they need to apply for a conditional use permit for this application to comply with all the applicable city codes and state and federal laws. This application may require additional permits. If the application is approved, staff recommends a condition of approval that prior to operation, the applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses, licenses to the Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of CU 22-06. Staff finds that the site size, dimensions, location, topography, and access are adequate for the proposed use. Staff has not identified any negative impacts to adjacent properties to ensure compliance with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code. Staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in Section 4 of this report. Subject property has access to city water and sewer services. Staff finds that the proposed use has adequate capacity. The application is not proposing a home occupation. The applicant is not proposing to establish a marijuana facility. The provisions of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the Planning Commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. As specified in Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.050, conditions could include but are not limited to expanding setbacks, limiting hours of operation, requiring site or architectural design features, imposing additional site and standards, and so forth. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of this report. These conditions are primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to the application. As required under this section, staff recommends that a condition of approval require that the conditional use permit shall be valid one year after the date of the Planning Commission approval if the use has not been substantially established as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.070A within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than one-year requests made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the Planning Commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that a condition of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria in Section 3 and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Board use of appeals, LUBA, may only be based on review and design criteria contained in Section 3. Recommended conditions of approval for CU 22-06, the property owner shall obtain and comply with all other applicable local, state... comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. Number two, the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the Planning Commission's approval if the use has not been substantially established as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.070A within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than nine-one-year requests made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the Planning Commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. In acting on a conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommending conditions are included in Section 4. Pursuant to ORS 227.175, the Planning Commission may establish an appeal period of not less than 12 days from the date of the written notice of the Planning Commission's decision is mailed. Staff, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. After the Planning Commission decides, staff recommends that the Planning Commission directed, direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval of the application, if the application is approved. After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following: move to approve application CU 22-06, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of the approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny CU 22-06, which includes adopting the findings of fact, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to the date and time certain or for other. If there's any questions for staff?
I have a question. So the, um, the total square feet of the property is 6,000. Is that sufficient?
Yes, so for that zone, it goes under the, so, let me bring this up. I think in the C2 zone, it goes under, depends on the, sorry, I'm trying to do this on my computer here. Yes, I think based on the, give me one second here to look this up, I'm sorry Eva.
I'm not in any rush.
Also, keep in mind that the size of the, of the parcel is pre-existing.
Right.
And it likely, and Angela will be able to tell us in a second, it may be non-conforming in the first place.
It is non-conforming and they will have to still comply with, so C2 zone doesn't necessarily have a minimum size, but it still has the minimum front yard of 20 feet, street side yard 20 feet, side of real yard, minimum of 10 feet if it's abutting a residential zone. If it's not, it's gonna be about three feet. So it kind of depends on, and we had talked to the applicant about this, about it, the size and their setback requirements, and they were fine with that. And because it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, they still have to adhere to all of the, the setback requirements and the lot coverage requirements.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for staff? All right, do we have our applicant in the room?
No.
So does anybody wish to speak in favor of this application? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Any neutral testimony, not in favor or against, just wishing to be heard? No? So at this point, we will close the public hearing for discussion amongst the council at 7:05. Is there any questions? I think it's just, it's one of those lots throughout town and it would be nice to see something on. I know that section right there is just notoriously tall, grassy weeds. While it's not the actual corner lot, it's a start. Maybe it'll push our corner property owner to start doing something with their land as well.
Well, I'm probably okay with this, but we create zones for a purpose.
Right.
And then we tend to accommodate anybody who wants to use it for a different purpose. We have that tendency. And, you know, there is a possibility here that that whole area with three or four lots together can become a commercial business. And I, I kind of hate to see us zone something and then give, give it to some other purpose and give up what it's really intended for. On the other hand, you know, whatever the commercial piece would be, they'd have to negotiate with herefore property owners and I hate to deny somebody the use of that property, but I do have that reservation and we do it frequently.
I do agree with Commissioner Walthius. I think the one thing that this piece has going for it is that it actually faces 19th instead of Main Street as an address. The usage around it, our homes, just because of age and our town expansion. But I do, I do agree that sometimes we are a little lax in standing our ground, and I know that we are working on updating our zoning. So I don't know where this lands as far as our comprehensive plan map.
So Commissioner, or Chairman? So just as a reminder, this is allowed as a conditional use in this zone, so it's not, we're not zoning it, we're just, it's a conditional use. So this is part of that zone, so just as a reminder of that.
Yeah. So I, I, and we can look up the comp plan designation if you'd like. The, the main point to remember is that, you know, we are currently overhauling our development code, and this is currently allowed as a conditional use within the highway commercial zone. If that is seen as something that is a missed opportunity or something that we want to preserve for future commercial development and so forth, you know, it can be gone after in that fashion to simply remove it as a conditional use in the future. Obviously, in this particular application, you have to stick with the rules that are in place when they applied. But the reason we have conditional uses is that sometimes there are uses that would probably be good for the community that just don't quite fit within the, within the zone, or there's something about the property that makes it not great for the desired type of development. I can't really speak to that in this situation, but that's why these things come to you, is you get to, to weigh those options and determine whether it, whether it works. I will say that looking at the, the data from Lynn County, it looks like this lot, and correct me if I'm wrong, Angela, because i-if they recently acquired it, that, this may be old information, but this lot and the two lots that abut it that are vacant, that are on Main Street, all show to be owned by the same, the same organization. Is that the case?
Yes, that is, and they have talked about some options for the other two lots, but at this point, they want to get started on this one, so it is owned by the same people.
So my concern, looking at the application, was just, then in the description of the nature of the request, they put "single-family residences," and so that makes, I'm a little concerned with.
So that right there, single, so single-family residences or manufactured home, meaning that is actually what the standard is. I wrote in there, because that's what the standard says in the municipal code. They're, they're wanting to allow for a single-family residence, but Chapter 17.24.090 says "single-family residences or manufactured homes."
Okay, thank you.
Well, maybe this is something that we need to look at in the future as far as, especially the, the properties that directly abut Main Street, as far as going forward with our code, to preserve that commercial corridor.
Chairman, just, so the comprehensive plan is also highway commercial?
Okay.
We can certainly use our imagination and think of dozens of businesses that could occupy that space.
Correct.
And we're probably closing the door to that.
Yeah.
Another question, Angela. When this property was purchased by the current owners, was it already in a commercial zone?
Yes, yes, they bought it as is, and they've talked about the plans for all three lots, and this is what they wanted for that northern lot, but it's, they haven't changed any of the zoning. They were just looking through, you know, what was approved and what's conditionally approved for this zone and.
Yeah, when, and when you think that the garbage trucks all come out there, it, it really seems to be more of a commercial use presently or sometime in the future. I'm just tossing out those thoughts.
So the discussion is, is interesting, particularly because of the location of this lot, and the fact that we can't change the zoning, we're not being asked to change the zoning. So what's the greater good to have the lot vacant? Or to have it with a building on it, is that better as a private residence? And those are all value judgments. And so I think that's what's before us, is what's the greater good for the community today?
I guess my personal opinion is that I would rather see a single-family home on it that could be removed at a later date with less impact than leaving it empty and with even the option of sticking apartments on it, which I believe can also be done in the C2 zone.
Yeah, and that's outright permitted.
And outright permitted, so, I mean, you could either put, allow a single-family residence, or they could stick another block of apartments on it.
This is Jamie. And just looking at the aerial, the existing residential uses that are adjacent to this property would make it seem like this would be a compatible use for that property, for it to be residential use.
Hey, does anybody else have anything they'd like to add or discuss in regards to this application?
There was a house on this place, according to what Joe Grable said.
Oh, yeah, I do remember.
It was removed between 2012 and 14.
If there's no other questions or discussion, we'll look for a motion in regards to our application.
In spite of my comments, I will make the motion to move to approve application CU 22-06, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of this decision, and direct, hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I would second that motion.
Here we have a motion and a second, I'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Wood?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Walthius?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Lohman?
Yes.
Commissioner Melter?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right. With that, we will move on to our final application on the eve of the evening. CU 22-07, we will open a public hearing at 7:16. Application CU 22-07, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for duplexes in a residential low-density zone. Duplexes not meeting Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.25.020B are allowed via conditional use permit pursuant to Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.24.030M. The subject property contains approximately 142,523 square feet and is in a residential low-density R1 zone. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. With that being read in, do any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
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 Any conflicts of interest?
None.
No.
None. Uh, any ex parte information?
No.
No.
All right, at this point, we'll go over to Angela for our staff report.
Okay, as Chairman Parker read, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for duplexes in a residential low-density zone. The applicant does intend to apply for a three-lot partition on the property. As of the, this meeting, they have, I have yet to see the applications, but that is the intention. Based on the FEMA flood insurance map dated September 29th, 2010, the property is not in the special flood hazard area. Based on the review of the city Sweet Home Local Wetlands inventory and review of the National Wetlands inventory map, the subject property does not contain inventor wetlands. However, a wetland delineation was completed in 2021 by Turnstone Environmental Consultants. Wetlands were identified on the southern half of the subject property. That's included in your attachment C. The subject property has frontage and access along Long Street. The subject property has access to city water and sewer services in Long Street. The subject property is in the R1 zone, and the applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow duplexes in a residential low-density zone. For this application to comply with all applicable city codes and state and federal laws, this application may require additional permits. If this application is approved, staff recommends a condition of approval that prior to operation, the applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses to the Sweet Home Community Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of CU 22-07. As proposed, the applicant has limited development area due to identified wetland constraints. The applicant shall provide access through one shared driveway off Long Street. The City of Sweet Home, street design and access management standards state a minor arterial shall have shared driveway access per the TSP Table 4.3. Staff finds that the site size, dimensions, location, and topography are adequate for the proposed use. Staff has not identified any negative impacts to the adjacent properties. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are based in Section 4 of this report. The subject property has access to city water and sewer. Staff finds that the proposed use has adequate capacity. The City of Sweet Home Public Works Department prefers that the water and sewer services have mainline extensions under the driveway into property, with services to each dwelling connecting to the extensions rather than having 12 connections into the street. The applicant is not proposing a home occupation. The applicant is not proposing to establish a marijuana facility. The provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the Planning Commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria, as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. As specified in Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.050, conditions could include, but are not limited to, expanding setbacks, limiting hours of operation, requiring site or architectural design features, imposing additional sign standards, and so forth. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of this report. These conditions are primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to the application. As required under this section, staff recommends that a condition of approval require Required under this section, staff recommends that a condition of approval require that the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the planning commission approval if the use has not been substantially established, as defined under the Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point eight zero point zero seven zero A within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than one-year requests made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the planning commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired, and a new application will be required. If the planning commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria in section three and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the land board use of appeals may only be based on review and design criteria contained in section three. Recommended conditions of approval for CU twenty-two dash zero seven. Number one, the applicant shall apply for and be approved for a three-lot partition. Two, the applicant shall provide one shared driveway access for all proposed parcels. Number three, the applicant shall provide mainline extensions for water and sewer services under the shared driveway with services to each dwelling connecting onto the extensions. Number four, the applicant shall maintain the designated wetland portion of the property in accordance with the Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point seven two point zero seven zero and the Department of State Land Waterways and Wetlands Regulations. Five, the property owner shall obtain and comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. Number six, the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the planning commission approval if the use has not been substantially established, as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point eight zero point zero seven zero A within that time period. The planning, the city planner may grant one extension up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than a one-year request made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the planning commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired, and a new application will be required. In acting on a conditional use permit application, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the planning commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in section four. Pursuant to the ORS two-two-seven point one seven five, the planning commission may establish an appeal period of not less than 12 days from the date of the written notice of the planning commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date of that notice of decision is mailed. After the planning commission decides, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval of the application, if the application is approved. After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. Move to improve application CU two-two dash zero seven, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application CU two-two dash zero seven, which includes adopting the findings of fact, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing of decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time, or four, other. There's any questions for staff?
I have a question. According to one of the letters in here, there was piles dumped on the wetlands. And if the wetlands are supposed to be maintained, what does that exactly mean?
So, now, I'm not exactly certain, but I think the piles were dumped there before this applicant owned the property. However, maintaining it means, like in our, we have code that says, you know, making sure that drainage doesn't go on neighboring properties. You know, they can, they can maintain, take down blackberry, any invasive species. If there's any danger trees, those can be removed. There's various things that you can do in these situations, you know, when it comes to building on them, that's where the stronger regulations come in. So they're, you know, maintaining it just means making sure that it's not, you know, impacting the neighbors in any way. You know, the building on it doesn't make the water pool up even more, those types of things.
Does that mean if those piles need to be dispersed so that it does not flood there, and the grass needs to be mowed so there's no fire hazard, that that has to be done?
Well, I haven't been on the property itself, and like I said, those piles, at this point, I think I would, you know, that would be something DSL would have to probably comment on, but it's, the way it is right now is pre-existing. So from here moving forward, it has to be maintained. So, you know, and they have to get fill-in removal permits if they go anywhere near those. And so it just kind of depends on the work that's going to be done on there. And without the partition, we don't have, I don't have building plans yet, I don't have the partition plan yet. There's an example in your packet of what the proposal is going to be.
One thing to keep in mind is we, we often have comments about stormwater or water overflowing from one property to another as an attempt to, or as part of people's comments when it comes to new development. There is a, quite a lot of naturally occurring water that flows throughout the city. It's not always captured appropriately by drainage dishes, especially when it comes to areas like this that have wetlands on them. And so it's, while those piles certainly should not have been placed there, it's unclear whether they're actually the cause of any flow onto another property that would require, it's kind of beyond our ability to, to study. And so the other thing I would comment on is that often development tends to improve the drainage situation because when you have a naturally, you know, when you have a vacant lot, things just happen with the, with the way the, the wetlands have developed and so forth. But when you actually develop it, the building code requires that there be, that the land be graded in such a way that it's, it drains away from the buildings that you place on it, drains into the, into the public right-of-way so that drainage can be handled appropriately. So new development will, may not entirely improve the situation, but it won't make it worse because the new development will have to account for its, its runoff in, according to building code.
So the property owners who wrote in concerned about past flooding caused by the wetland. You said there's really no way to, like, go out and determine, or it's hard to determine if it's the piles that are causing it, or if it's something else. I'm wondering now that there, you know, if there's an approval and property is developed, then who becomes responsible for maintaining that and making sure? And is, is it the property owner's job then to make sure that the wetlands are being maintained and aren't overflowing into the surrounding properties?
So when it comes to naturally, when it comes to water like this, it's, it's not something that the city usually gets involved in. Usually that's a civil complaint between property owners. And so that civil complaint process is what I would recommend people follow if there is, if they can't get their neighbors to cooperate with them. When it comes to new development, the property owner is ultimately responsible for what's built on their property. If it's built according to code and, and approved, that is, the code should account for that. If there was an error in inspection processes or something being approved that shouldn't have been approved, then certainly there would be some liability on the part of the, of the government in this case. But if, if the property owner acted in good faith on the, and on permits that were approved and within the law, that would, that should account for that. If the, I, this is kind of going off into legal matters. I mean, if, if a property, if a neighbor has a complaint about water flowing off the property and is alleging that the prop, that the, that their neighbor built something that was unpermitted or somehow violated the law, then certainly they'd have, that would play into grounds for a lawsuit. But when it comes to our, our development permitting process, that's why we have building codes and, and things like that, and that would take care of that.
My concern is, you know, one of the letters that the lady said about the runoff. Did the owner of that property that put the mounds or whatever, put them up there so it wouldn't have as much runoff? You know, I'm looking into like a crystal ball, thinking that they put that there so it didn't have as much runoff. Because before they put that, those mounds there, it was probably having a heavy runoff, so I'm, I feel for the, the neighbor next door, thinking that once those maybe got removed, maybe it's going to flood into the.
It, it could be that the removal of those piles would make it something worse. I, I really don't know why, and I don't think anybody knows why the previous property owner did that.
It was a long time ago, and all I remember was dump truck after dump truck. And I think they were just stockpiling it there as, as a storage area for another project. And I don't think they were put there to mitigate any kind of surface water or wetland water. I think it was just a convenient location that somebody is like, hey, refill. And they dumped, I, I would guess, just unofficially, that there are probably 20-plus piles, 20-plus loads.
Of just filter?
Yeah, that was just brought in as a side effect of another development. So, I mean, that being said, the whole purpose of this application is in regards to the duplexes. And hopefully we'll see more stuff.
I would, I would say we, I, I don't know the wetland regulations that well, and I don't know what DSL would say about it. But given that those are, it's, those are easily proven as not, as not naturally occurring mounds, there should be some potential for them to be removed or, or graded with the, along the northern part of that property that doesn't have wetlands.
And I think based on their placement, I don't think that you could develop the property without dealing with the mounds.
Probably would have to.
Just nature the beast, you're gonna have to. At least blade them all.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like the, those concerns, as I'm reading the recommended conditions of approval, that number four, they kind of cover that, make sure that they maintain the designated wetland portion of the property in accordance with the Sweet Home Municipal Code, but also the Department of State Lands Waterways and Wetlands Regulations. So you don't have to.
And the applicant is here. Yeah, the applicant is here, so during his testimony, certainly that can be addressed.
That might be a good segue. If nobody else has any questions for staff in regards to the application, this time, we could invite our applicant up. Be able to address the commission. Hey Jan, if you have a seat, if you could just state your name and address.
Andy Snegref, twenty-six eighty Progress Way, Progress Way, Oregon. The property is owned by me and my four sons. Actually, on that site, just north of it, I built a house, right? A newer house in two thousand seventeen, I believe. So I'm a little familiar with that area. And when I bought the property originally from previous owner, and you could see the mounds where they're at. So, and I bought it not knowing there was wetland gonna be there. But as we started proposing and time constrained, and we ran into this problem. And my orig, there is original, Angela's got an application that there was a three-lot partition that was approved on this property previously. That expired due to the development of proposed property. We're gonna do single-family homes up to 14 lots originally. Well, that didn't happen because of the wetlands and all that. So we kind of missed, it was a mishap on our side, didn't do our due diligence, which it is hard to do with. You know, if you're trying to get a wetland delineation, it can take up to six months to a year. And I don't think any seller will wait for, for that long. So that's where we're at today. So the reason for this application is we believe that if we put at least three duplexes on the property at this point, it, it will be a good thing and we'll recoup some of our costs that we already have into the property. And it, with the, I'll call it the green space with the wetlands, it'll be a good thing for the community, you know, people can have something to walk back. There's probably a good acre and a half of it back there. And it's kind of secluded. So that's that. And then one other question that you guys were talking about, the water runoff. You know, I was able to walk that property a couple winters there, and it was kind of strange if you go look at the backside of the property where the cul-de-sac is. And they got those two houses there that when they built those houses, they actually raised the elevation. So actually, so it actually created more wetland than my property. So as Blair mentions, the development can add or, you know, take the water or, you know, flooding down the road. So my proposal is actually, we're gonna be nowhere near to where that wetland is. So and all of our runoff is gonna go towards the front of the property because there's a big ditch along Long Street. So I don't see anything that's gonna have any more flooding than what's there already. That's been created previously by, you could see adjoining neighbors all the way around, around my property where it's been sitting there. So every time you build a house, you tend to build everything up. So it creates a kind of a hole for this property. So we can go on and talk how it was caused, it just was caused. If this property was developed 20 years ago, it would have been in a better position than it is today. So my, my thing that I want to do is just basically develop it, have the wetlands as a green space, and be done with it.
Have you recently did any due diligence search with the county or state with wetlands? Because I thought with wetland property, you're gonna be able to, if they approve you to build on it, you have to build up. Is that not true?
Well, as Angela and I believe Blair mentioned, that in this, in the city or state inventory, there was no wetlands on that property. So, you know, the state and the city didn't have it. And but what happens, say, if I want to go in there and I bring in a, a civil engineer, structural engineer to design my property, all of them are gonna be exposed to, you know, bring all these findings to the state of Oregon. So before I can do any development, like major development, it would come up down the road. So the delineation is a, a process that takes place after I submit to the city. And usually it comes up with the private, you know, engineer that will say, hey, Andy, we got water issues here. So I could be in thousands of dollars before, you know, I know what's going on. So that's why I bought this property. We bought it about two some years ago, and nothing has happened just because of that. Those are the circumstances we're under.
So what's gonna happen? When you build out in the front, then the back's gonna be wetland? And who's gonna maintain that?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna maintain it. As I think we, we spoke with Angela, and I, I don't know if Blair was in the conversation, is we want to keep it as, as a green space as much as we can. And I'm thinking about, you know, writing it in our, you know, restrictions, and so that way, if I decide to sell the property, that they're gonna maintain it. And it's gonna be in the state, the city rules and regulations. So basically, whatever we do is gonna, you know, be approved by the city.
So the, the three-lot partition that is, that is forthcoming, one of the lots would have, I believe, one would have the entire wetland area on that lot. And it would stay with that lot, and whoever owns that lot would be responsible for it. So it's, it's a, it's not, it's not like it's going to not have, it's not gonna be a separate parcel that doesn't have, that nobody's motivated to take care of it.
Right.
It's gonna be the person who owns that property.
Whoever owns that, it's not gonna be property just for people to go out and enjoy because it's gonna be owned by that duplex. That was my point, I guess.
Yeah, and, and, and there's not gonna be any building permitted on it because it's, it's now in our wetland inventory. Now that there's wetlands been found on it, we know about it, and we can't approve any further partitioning of it or any further development on that property.
Do you anticipate dividing Lot Three in any way?
Not knowing exactly. Our intent is, was to have at least five. Our intent is, was to have at least five parcels on there, because if you look at the, as per my engineer, if I ever did, it would just be, right now, what I was going to do is build two duplexes in each corner of the private driveway, and then leave a, put a duplex on one side. So, if there was ever any other partition, it would be only one more building site there that would be allowed. There's no more for more than one more. So, I don't know the answer to your question, but that's all the space that there would be.
And we, and we will keep in mind too, that this whole application is in regards duplexes on the property and not the partition of the property as of yet. So, it, it is beneficial that the applicant has included a proposal as far as what they're hoping to do or wanting to do. So, just do keep in mind that we are looking at the duplex factor. But thank you for answering the question. Basically, that in the, in the interim, you were going to keep the properties as rentals, and then at one point, if they ever did sell, it would be assigned wetland care to that one particular lot.
Well, I'd give it to the city for free if they want to maintain it.
That's above my pay grade.
I also feel like it would be landlocked.
Well, you got some, there's a, there's a little bit of access somewhere there was from, oh, yeah, look, if you're looking 54th, there's a little bit of access, I think, can come off of that one street, do that wetlands, if you look at it. There's a little bit of, I believe that, correct? Off of, I can't see from here.
38th.
Yeah.
That's a private drive.
Oh, that, okay.
Yeah, so, there's no public right-of-way there.
It will be landlocked.
Yes.
Well, it's part.
Any questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
It's not necessarily landlocked, because it's, it will, if it's partitioned, it will be the third lot. It'll be part of the entire third lot.
Right, because it won't.
So, it's not technically landlocked.
My question was, is it, it, it looks like on that sketch, that parcel number three could be divided east and west. And that's why I asked a question if there was going to be any.
Yeah, so, but if you look at the, if it's a three-lot, yeah. Well, it would never be landlocked, because I don't think the city would allow me to partition it in that sense.
Do you have any other questions for our applicant? All right, thank you so much. All right, so at this point, we'll continue our due diligence and ask if there are any proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application. Any opposing testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition. Any neutral testimony, those wishing not to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. So, at this point, we will close the public hearing for discussion amongst the commission at 7:44. This is one of those things too, that coming up very shortly with our population delineation, if we exceed 10,000 people, that duplexes will be allowed on any lot in a residential building. So, we just happen to be dealing with prior to our official 10,000. Do they have anything they'd like to say, discuss, or look for a motion if there's no other discussion?
Well, I can see now, and I wonder if, when other houses were being built around this wetlands, when it wasn't determined, because even the state didn't have it, that things were getting dumped, and it wasn't being protected or even built on as appropriately. They were just filling wetlands so that they could build houses, and that might be the main problem that's causing the flooding in the surrounding homes.
Yeah, and honestly.
Especially because of where it is.
And as our applicant stated, had this be done, been done in the, the 80s or even in the 70s, they would have just pushed that dirt right in the back.
That's right, no more wetlands there.
So, I'm sure at some point when we see sub, or not a subdivision, but it would be a plat map, that there can be some things in there as far as swales or something to allow excessive drainage out to the front.
Oh, in the partition?
Right.
Right, right.
And I, and I feel pretty confident that when they go through the process of developing the property, and they have to contact the state, that the state will assess that as far as maintenance and what needs to go forward.
And commissioners, if I, if you, if you, if I may, this is an example of, we have a couple other lots like this that are large that weren't originally wetlands, like the old airport was a runway. But they've sat there long enough that there's now, you know, soils that are determined and plant species, and so that's kind of how they determine. So, it's been there long enough that it's acquired these wetlands kind of characteristics. And so, that's why it wasn't originally on there, but we have a, a few of these areas that are, now have wetlands on them, and they have been determined to have wetlands, even though they didn't in the past. So, that's how these things kind of come about. It is just sitting there, and we get a lot of rain, so.
Well, one other comment, while we're just still waiting openly, is that I agree with the applicant that with all the duplexes and apartments across the street, this is an area that's not particularly requiring single-family dwellings. I think that would be favorable.
Yeah. I feel like duplexes will be a, a nice addition to the development that's going on down there.
Yeah, I agree.
I'd much rather see a duplex in an apartment complex. So, if there's no other further discussion or concerns, we would look for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Move to approve application CU 22-07, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report, the setting of the 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Lowman?
Yes.
Mr. Melter?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Motion carries, application passes.
All right, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it. We look forward to seeing what you come up with.
All right, good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so at that, at this time, we have completed our public portion of the meeting. I guess I'm going to go ahead and hand it over for staff for updates. I would just like to add really quick, that if we could keep it short, I've got a track code to go rescue off the side of the road. So.
All right, I don't have a lot to burden you with. We are moving forward with the housing needs analysis. The consultants are doing all the work, and we're just providing information for them. Transportation system plan is theoretically in the works, but the procurement process with ODOT has taken a very, very long time. It's a good thing we're not actually paying for it, because I'd be kind of mad if we were, because it's, it's just taking forever. And then, at our next meeting, we will talk code update again. We'll have a bunch of stuff from Walt and some changes for you to consider to the draft. And we hope that, that during that meeting, we can basically have everything, all the decisions that, all the adjustments to the code that you would like to see, have that all decided on, and, and then we can move forward with the public hearing and get that officially recommended. One thing I will add is, we, we've had a code audit by, I think, I believe I mentioned it before, that examined our, our draft code to look for compliance with the various changes that the state has made, the various mandates that the state has made. I got an email from Walt today, that essentially, he said that he had taken some more time to review some of that and found that there's quite a few of those changes that we simply will have to make, that we don't have a lot of choice in the matter, which is rather frustrating, but given the, the state's movement to, to essentially limit home rule, that's kind of what we're left with. So, that's, that'll all be coming before you at the, the next, the next meeting. Angela, do you have anything else to add?
No, you guys should have copies of that in your packets. There's a highlighted one of what the, should be with the code, so I gave you a printed copy. I also emailed it to you. So, if you don't see it, just let us know. We'll be reviewing it all, though, at the 21st, the meeting on the 21st. So, the first meeting in May, we've got more applications. You guys are going to have more conditional uses. I've had more conditional uses in this first couple months than I did the entirety of last year. So, it's a conditional use here. And we have one zone map amendment, I have one partition. Tomorrow, I should be getting a subdivision, a variance, a partition, and two property line adjustments, all for the same project. So, that will be coming up probably middle of May, that you'll see that. So, but other than that, that is all I have.
Just a point of information, is most planning work is, is preparatory to development, and so you don't always get the, the updates on the development that has occurred. But the subdivision that was approved at the 45th and Main, there's a subdivision there, it's, that subdivision is pretty much done. It has developed lots that are, that are now starting to be built on. And there was one firm that bought 20, was it only 20, or was it 22 of those lots, all at the same time? And they have submitted building permit applications for almost all of them already, all at once.
At once.
And they're, basically, the way they operate is to, is to build several houses all at the same time. So, in the next few months, you're going to see that entire subdivision be just filled. It's going to be like seeing a neighborhood pop up overnight. So, it should be interesting to see that happen, where it, we, in March, we had 19 applications for single-family homes, for building permits. In all of 2021, we had 23. So, it's kind of crazy to have that happen all at once, but it's, it's neat to see, we're, we're seeing much-needed housing come into town.
Hopefully, get some restaurants, more restaurants coming.
You got to bring the people first, and then, then you have the captive audience for those restaurants.
All right, if there's no other discussion or staff updates, we'll go ahead and conclude the meeting for April 7 at 7:54.
Leave the books?
Yeah.